They're all set. Welcome everybody. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting, Wednesday, December 20th, 2017. And this meeting is being recorded, it's being shown live on Channel 9, recorded and shown on Channel 9 throughout the week. If anybody is recording or any part of this meeting, you just need to let me know. Let's start.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public input on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. Why don't you guys come up?
(inaudible)
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 (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) Why don't we start by, these are the two members of the Board of Selectmen from Rehoboth. Why don't you introduce yourselves?
Well, first of all, most importantly, we want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a joyous New Year.
Thank you.
And we are looking forward to another year of working together with you and agreeing when we can and disagreeing when we must, but yet remaining friends and allies in spite of maybe some disagreements here and there.
This is Skip Vardane, who is the Chairman of the Board over in (inaudible).
Jerry Schwal.
Jerry Schwal, Vice Chair.
Now, you had sent us an inquiry about the roof, and rather than send you back a letter, we felt it was important enough that we come here and explain to you that at our town meeting, we did table that. However, on the 29th of January, we will address that issue. We realize that it's a multimillion dollar asset, we realize that we have an obligation to put a roof over it. We had questions as to the allocation of monies on it, and we had to wait, and as things turned out, our information was correct. And we now have numbers from Ms. Antonellis that we're satisfied with, and so we will move ahead, and I would anticipate, would you not, that there would be a positive vote once we receive the article from the school committee. You've voted to submit one, but you haven't submitted it.
We, the school committee voted to submit to you for the special town meeting, the request for viral authority for the new high school roof.
Well, we need the wording of your article, we don't want to word it for you. You know what I'm saying, Chris?
It's going to be the same wording.
Same wording?
That appeared last time. What we received was a copy of the vote that was taken by the school committee, not the article that you're requesting to have shown in our warrant.
I would follow that to Ms. Antonellis, that's the information from the bond council as to how the article is supposed to be, as far as I can tell, for the warrant. If something's different, then it should probably follow.
You didn't get it, is what we're telling you. We anticipate it's the same, because it's the same bond council.
The school committee in the December 14th meeting.
It was different wording the last time, from the vote to what bond council provided to us to put in the warrant, different wording. And we would expect that the same wording from the last warrant would be the one that's submitted, but we're not going to assume that and put it in the warrant.
I'll follow.
Okay.
I think we've got, our people work with your people, problems have probably already been solved, Chris, honestly. It's not a problem, it's just a lack of a piece of the puzzle that we need in order to get this thing moving. So, I, so that's, I don't know if you had any other questions on that?
I had heard that, what you just said.
Yeah.
And I think the purpose of our letter was just to be clear about our concerns, you know, it's been a concern for a long time, and I understand the rationale of, you know, postponing it so you don't have to have another election or whatever, and also get the numbers right.
Well, that's it, too. And we didn't lose any time, I mean, roofs should only be addressed and fixed as an emergency during this time of the year. You know, yes, I know you say you can do them, but maybe I know more than most in that since it's been in existence, I've had a construction supervisor's license in pursuant to that. Fifteen hours every two years, I have to sit in the courses, and some of them had to do with roofs, and failures because of weather. It's not illegal to do it, and I know your contractors are going to tell you they can do it, but it's not the best-case scenario. So, I mean, that wasn't the reason for our delay, but I think it works in our favor to have it done in better weather. That's just.
And the other thing to know, I mean.
My experience and, if you would, professional opinion, so I got the license, I get to say that, don't I? Thank you, Nancy.
(inaudible) Quote, Mr. Vardane, professional opinion.
I mean, the other thing, you know, the residents of Dayton are very concerned about the roof. I mean, I think, you know, they have kids over there, and I think we're all concerned about it.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've had, had it on the table since 2014, and, you know, it didn't come about, so there's a lot of concern over here.
Well, I think we'll be moving ahead on it.
Yeah, well, it's good to hear.
Unless you see something new that I haven't.
And as far as the timing, you know, we had roofs for Palmer River and for Beckwood, and we approved those with special meetings, special town meetings, special elections.
As usual.
And that was done last year, so that could be done during the summer. They're working on them now. So, you know, they, we agree that it's, we should get it done, we want to get it done, but we also expect that once we take action, that it does get done.
Right.
And it does, we don't wait. And just a personal note, I appreciate the letter, because I don't, I don't, I'm not a Facebooker, I'm not a Twitter guy, I don't wake up at 2:00 in the morning and feel everybody in the world needs to know what I had for dinner last night. But I have been told that, you know, there have been some comments made attributed to this board on social media, and I would just encourage you, if you get a question, any of you, question, pick up the phone and call one of us.
I'm with you guys.
Right?
I don't own social media.
So, I did bring a couple of cards, if you'd like them, but just, just call me and I'll be more than happy. You know, because, you know, people call and say, hey, did you see what was posted on Face? I don't pay any attention to that stuff.
You shouldn't have that on Facebook.
I appreciate people coming to meetings and addressing me face-to-face.
Yep.
Picking up a phone and calling me, sending an email, if that's what you want to do, but don't, don't make comments about the, our board, any more than I would make comments about your board on Facebook, if I knew even how to get on Facebook, so.
Since the Facebook issue.
I have a Facebook page that I don't even post, somebody doesn't want me.
I strongly suspect it might be a younger member of your board that would use Facebook.
I would.
But you know what, but you know what, I want to tell you something. You're totally forgiven, I'll tell you why.
I wasn't asking.
No, I'm going to tell you why, I'm going to, let me tell you why. You do a good job, but you know I always call you the newbie. You, you, you are, you are a young pup, and a young pup doesn't always know when to bark, so it's okay.
It's okay, we call Skip Rusty.
He squeaks, not on.
Actually, that's Dave Perry who does it, not me, boss.
That's true.
I think, I think unfortunately, and I'm not talking about Brad, but I'm talking about generally people on Facebook or wherever, make assumptions that they have no business making. Because, you know, there's, there's something I, the Four Agreements, I don't know if you've ever read that book.
Oh, you won't read something about that.
It's a short little book, and it talks about the Four Agreements, and one of them is don't make assumptions. Because the only people that know what you're thinking is you guys. So, and so at this point, as far as I see it, we are where we are, you know, you're going to move forward.
Yes.
Hopefully that will pass, so we can get this roof done.
If it should, we want to speak into it, it's a passage.
Yeah.
The board was never anything other than supportive, but you have to understand our position, I would appreciate if you would. There have been three instances in the past six months where we were told it was going to be apportioned one way, only to find out after people did some work, that in at least three cases that we know of, the apportionment was incorrect.
The capital cost, meaning?
Yes, yeah. So, when, and then if you, if you have a question, if you're uncertain, and history is showing that you're correct when you challenge, we would not have been proper in taking action at the meeting.
Sure.
Put something through, unless those questions were answered.
Is it still equalized valuation?
Equalized valuation is part of it.
Yeah.
It's equalized valuation of population of the schools.
That's been around forever.
I know.
All beings know that.
Yes, we do. And that's, you know, if, not to get into the proposed regional agreement or anything, but I'm going to propose two words, fair and equitable, today and tomorrow, because things have a chance of changing one day, right?
Sure.
And I think that it's a responsibility of boards of selectmen to enter into contracts and to make sure that those contracts are correct, and not just a rubber stamp, something that we get.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I would, I would really encourage your board to do the same amount of due diligence that our board is, in looking at it, not only for today, but down the road.
Absolutely.
So that it's clear, so that when other people are sitting in your seats and my seat, Skip will always be here.
And Nancy.
And, yeah, that's right, the two of you, you're done. People will be able to pick it up and know what it means.
That's right.
And not have it written, you know, to the point where we could both read it and come up with completely different approaches to it. And that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's fair and equitable to all stakeholders, and that it's clear and concise, so we all know what it means.
Is the rate of reimbursement from the state what it was back when this project was first voted on? Is that, we still have that rate, the reimbursement rate?
For which?
The DI roof.
We're not getting reimbursement for the roof, we haven't submitted that through the SBA, because we were, because we did not get a vote in for it within 2014, we're going a different route with a different vendor.
And actually, what we.
Energy savings thing with training?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
What we found with the Mass Roof Association, whatever it is, is by the time they get done building up their costs and then doing the reimbursement, we're doing roofs without that over in Rehoboth, and it's costing less money than if we had moved forward with the reimbursement from the state.
Well, that was the question we had, because when we approved it, and Rehoboth didn't approve it, and then it came up at the town meeting, the question was, do we have to vote this again? And the answer from bond council was, no, your vote holds, but when we looked at the number, I said, it's half. It's up. They said, no, you, you, if Rehoboth approves it, that is the number, it's like 6 million, not 12 or something, and we couldn't figure out what happened to the number. How could it drop so, but as you said, you know, when they get through with the form with the number.
That's doing you to do it.
It's like, it's like a retailer who drives, you know, sets their, their price 20% higher so they can run a sale 10% off. I'm learning a lot of those rebates and a lot of those grants, that's what it is. The costs get driven up, and then all of a sudden, wow, look at this, we're getting money back. And that, that's standard, I'm not saying that's school department, that's known, that's.
It's a concept.
Yeah, yeah. Once we figure out, on this regional agreement that we've been talking about, once we kind of figure out where we're at on it, will we, we'll discuss, you know, and, because we'll be having discussions with the subcommittees, this is a draft document.
Yep.
And it encourages and solicits our input, so we're performing due diligence on it. There's some areas of concern that are going to be mutual.
Yep.
And so we will discuss them, share that with you, and so, you know, open and free conversation, we'll give them what you asked for. Input, right, Chris?
That's what we want.
You're going to get it, you know you are. We've probably taken up enough of your time.
Well, I appreciate you coming over, I appreciate you reaching out to us.
Anytime, you know that.
We're all on the same page, and we'll get this roof done.
Some of us have been friends forever, and shall remain so, and I have new friends, so.
Young friends.
The newbie.
We just won't stay on Facebook.
We're going to take his license away.
Anything else for us, Jack?
No, no.
Newbie? No?
Sorry, Chris.
Chris Andrew, Wolf Street, and I, so, look, I heard that the two points, like, that the same day, tentatively agree, you know, that the roof project should be moved forward in this next special town meeting. The question I have, though, is, you know, the roof project is a financial article that comes to the town meeting and is a recommendation by the finance committee.
Right.
So, in Rehoboth, the finance committee members are appointed by the board of selectmen, unlike in Dayton, they're appointed by the moderator. So, I'm just curious and concerned if the selectmen are going to have discussions with their finance committee.
To get them on board.
Because the finance committee is a separate entity, they're going to be beholden to appointment by the board of selectmen. If they're going to also have discussions with their finance committee about recommending the article, because, quite frankly, if the finance committee does not recommend the article, even if the board of selectmen, even if Mr. Vardane and Mr. Schwal are out there supporting it, you know, finance committee recommendations typically go the way that votes go.
Right.
I would be concerned if the finance committee recommendation was negative, for whatever reason it would be, that the article would not be approved by two-thirds of majority, which is a common discussion.
Well, I think that, I mean, I, I won't speak for you guys, but I think that, you know, that's their internal workings of how their town operates, and I think.
I'd be more than happy to.
Go ahead.
Take two minutes on this, it's a good point, but the first thing, I would never suggest that the board of selectmen call the finance committee and tell them how they should weigh in on an article, that's, that's not what we do. I want them to take a look at it, on its merits, and I want them to share their, their concerns or their support for it, okay? And as a member, a former member of the finance committee, it would not have gone well had a board of selectmen called me and told me how I should think. So, I won't speak for Skip, but I think he feels the same way. But I will tell you that the finance committee, in my understanding, is supportive of the roof. Their question was in the confusion over the allocation of the total cost of the project between Dayton and Rehoboth, and quite frankly, at that point, raising that issue and finding out that it was true, they did their job, and we thank them for doing their job. They were not trying to undermine getting a roof on the school, but they did have a question, they raised a question, and now it's been addressed, from what we learned the other night, the finance chair came before the board, and you asked him directly, have your questions been answered satisfactorily? And he said, yes. So, I would expect that, come, we have not had that discussion, but come town meeting, I would expect that they would be in support of it as well. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, I just want to clarify, I completely agree with what you said, you know, unfortunately, in this case, a text message was sent by a member of the school committee to a member of the finance committee, and that was deemed as the official communication from the district as the assessment value, and that was incorrect. So, I would assert to you and to the finance committee that they should only act on official communications that come from the district. It should be from the business administrator or the superintendent on district led, it shouldn't be a text message from anybody. If you get a text message from me saying X, Y, Z, you should treat that as ex parte conversation and nonofficial communications.
I would agree. It depends on your position, sir, if the chair is speaking, we would anticipate that it is the word of, of the committee, if a chair is speaking.
If you're referring to our financial article, I think you would be beholden to get that official funding of the business administration.
A chair should only speak for his committee, and if he's, if a chair is, is putting forth their own agenda, they should state it as so, but that's a chairman's, a chairman's duty is to, is to, is to properly represent the vote of his, of his, or the mood or the question of his, of his committee or board.
Right, remember, the financial information, I don't want to stick with you about it, this financial information that you referred to, which was incorrect, was a text message from the chair, wasn't the official communication from the district, the board of selectmen, sorry, the school committee did not vote on the allocation, right? The school committee is voting on the total, upon amount, not the specific allocation.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop you right there, though, I think.
I just want to make sure there's clear understanding about that communication.
I want to stay.
If I send you an informational piece of information to the district, you should receive it on district led, and not a text message or a Facebook post from me.
All I'll say is, the chair of the board should have talked to that individual, so that, you know, but I, I don't want, I think we're getting way off of this.
I want to bring this back to topic, though, and I think this is kind of what you were getting at. It sounds like you guys had an article, not you personally, but an article was put on to replace the roof, and then there was information that was found out after it was put on there that changed the perspective of that article. So, my question for you would be, is there any assurance that you can give the public that the due diligence on the article will be done beforehand, so that there are no surprises, if you will, or misinformation before it gets to the town meeting and everyone finds out? We, we don't have the full puzzle.
As far as we know, it's been, been looked at, and we are in acceptance. I don't, I can't see any surprises. I believe, and I asked this, as Jerry had said, I did quiz the chair of the finance committee, and there's, should be no surprises. You know, everything's been looked at that needs to be looked at, you know how certain things happen, but I don't anticipate. The warrant article got to us without a lot of time to perform due diligence on the part of anyone, and that's, you know, there's meetings, there's dates, there's votes, there's bond council, there's discount, I get it, so nobody's doing this on this one. They immediately did speak with the business manager, Catherine Antonellis. My understanding of this is, they pointed out to Catherine an error that she had made, and I know in a couple of other cases, it was something that Catherine had already done, that when questioned, those numbers got changed. So, I, I'm not, I don't know about relying on a text. My understanding was that there had been a conversation with the business manager, and so, but I'm not 100% sure, Chris, but that was my understanding. I don't think we tabled it based upon a text.
I wanted to just add one other thing, and I think you were getting at this, but I don't want to speak for you, Ms. Andrew, but I think what you were getting at, correct me if I'm wrong, you were asking if it would be possible, not for the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen to strong-arm the finance committee, but to have a meeting before the article, on the article, to get everybody on the same page, to see what's palatable to the finance committee, before you get to the meeting and find out if they do or don't like the article.
Let me say, I don't think that's really our business to get into, I think you run your town, and you have, and we have to have confidence that you're doing what you need to do, and what I've heard here tonight is, it makes sense, what you've done. So, I don't think we can say, you got to talk to your finance committee or anything like that, but I think.
But we will and have, and we, we don't go into town meeting without wrapping things up unless something falls out of the sky on us, and once in a while, you get a surprise. I can't see it happening twice, to answer your question.
I think, I think, looking back on this, that we should have had this meeting a long time ago, you know.
They would have given us time with the agreement first.
Everybody, everybody, like I said, everybody makes assumptions, I mean, that's human nature, but it doesn't serve any purpose.
My experience with the Rehoboth Finance Committee, when you and I were both in those positions, was that both of those finance committees and the chairs were pretty straight when they made a presentation, a decision on a position or whatever.
Oh, yeah?
Okay? And, and I think what is being described here is, is an unfortunate circumstance that happened, but certainly, as I say, you and I sat through a number of meetings as finance people, and sat on subcommittees, and DI advisory, and that whole bit, so, so I, you know, I don't have the concerns, but I'm going to ask one other question. Can you guys go to get the other article on the warrant for your town hall?
We can't, because all our money's going to the roof. How's that one, huh?
We, we, we wish we could.
We don't want to talk about your town hall.
He's being funny, but.
Yeah, I wish. We, that's not the reason, but we, we have tried to answer many concerns that our citizens had raised at the last time, and part of that, because of a lot of those concerns, we've had a structural study done of, of the buildings in question, both environmental condition as well as structural, and we are awaiting the structural portion of that, and that's going to give us some direction on, on what to do. That's all we can say, you know, at this point, we've got to do something. We'll see what happens.
I know it's been an issue that's out there, and, you know.
It's very frustrating trying.
It only took us 10 years to break ground for our police station, but we know that.
I know.
So.
Better late than never.
And Chief is retiring, is he, uh?
No, he wants another year.
He does? Well, good for him. He's, he's a good guy.
Yes.
He's an old boy, I get along very well with him, known forever.
I want to thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Once again, Merry Christmas.
You're welcome.
I got to give my hug.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what I got, Jerry.
I was going to say.
I totally thank you.
I love you.
We'll set up.
Thank you.
You're doing great.
No!
Pulled up the whole second floor, put on an addition, and.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
I will do that, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Next order of business is the town administrator's report.
Good evening, so we had a meeting last week, maybe earlier this week, no, last week, about bonding for the police station. Our treasurer's secretary was there and bond council, so we chatted about how much we were going to go out for bid at the bond market, and we settled on 4.8. Mr. McGee was comfortable with that figure, and so they'll be going to the market in February. So, in, on our meeting on the 7th, February 7th, Mary will be here to go through some borrowing notes with you and all of that, so basically, it's like signing your life away, there's lots of signatures, and that will take us a long time, but it'll be, it all for, all for a good cause. But as part of that conversation, we have to establish a credit, not a credit score, we don't have a credit history here, we have to establish a bond rating, and there's numerous ways to do that, we're in great shape, because we can kind of piggyback off what the school has already done, we have good stabilization, we have good, you know, we are good with finances, and to add to this, I propose that we establish a financial, we don't have time for a financial policy, but a statement, that would be a joint statement between the finance committee, the board of selectmen, and if we're really ambitious, the school committee, but I don't know about that, to basically set out what we are going to do in this town about our finances. That's financial goals, how much we, a percentage of our budget that we want to put in stabilization, just lay it all out there, you know, we don't want to take on too much debt at one time, lots of different things. I did some research, but I would like us to continue looking into that, so I'd be happy to work with the finance committee chairman, chairman of the sport effects, who was nominated as engineer.
I think a lot of those things are established.
They are. We now need to write it down and submit it to bond council, and, and the bond market will look on us favorably.
I think that's a really good idea, too, because as we know, there is a potential for other capital projects in the future, so having a really sound understanding of where our financial situation at, and where we think we're going to be in the future is, I think, a no-brainer, so good work.
See, Mallory equated it to an 18-year-old kid who's going to college and wants to get a, a credit card.
Credit card.
And they have no credit established, because they've never borrowed anything, so.
But you understood when she explained it that way, right?
This 18-year-old kid took a financial planning class, and so that's what this financial policy is, is our financial planning class.
The question is, did you? Do you have a credit card?
I'm, I'm 33, I don't understand.
So, essentially, we're just bolstering our position to get a better rate, better interest rate, and it won't be a policy, that takes a very long time, but at least it's, and I look at it as a start, it'd be a springboard for us to get together and eventually craft our policy, when we're ready.
4.8 the max, because it could be less.[1701.12]
4.8 the max, 'cause it could be less.
So we talked to Bond Council about that, and she basically warned us, don't go out for too much. Originally, the item, the amount was 5 million, and we brought it down to 4.8, because if you have too much, you then have to find something to spend it on. It's not like you can return it. So he felt, Dennis McGee felt comfortable that this would encompass everything and potentially have a little bit left over.
But my question was, 4.8 is the max.
Yes.
We could borrow less.
Yeah, well.
That's what, you have to go out to the bond market, and that, you have to give them a number.
Right.
What happened was.
But what I'm saying to you is, have you had a discussion with the Finance Committee? Because we have money in various accounts.
Let me, can I speak to that? We talked about it, because I think the amount that originally was put on the table was 5 million.
5 million.
5 million. And then talking to Dennis, and we've already put $500,000 from one of those accounts into it.
Based on the special town meeting.
At the special town meeting. And secondly, if, if we should need more money, we can go out to some short-term borrowing, which is very unlikely, but, so we're not boxed in, but if we take too much on the bond.
The answer to my question is yes, 4.8 is the max. That's what I was looking for.
For, for this, going out to this.
Thank you.
Is, does the 4.8, there are certain contingencies.
It includes it.
It includes that already, okay. So you wouldn't need, now, we're not asking this, everybody watching, but if it ended up coming in over budget, then you have to do what he's describing, which is short-term.
No, no, it can't come in over budget, no.
Comes in over budget, we have to go to town meeting.
No.
I understand more than was allocated to a meeting.
Right, exactly.
But if we need, but if we need borrow, more borrowing, we can do short-term, but.
That's bands, that's bands.
But it doesn't sound like that's gonna be an issue, so.
And then, so that's, that's how, that's how I wrap it in. I am meeting with Ed Schwartz, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, next week with the Chairman of this Board to go over some things about the budget, but I plan on talking to him about this and hopefully getting the two, you know, Committees to agree. Oh, and I will say, I just have to add this, so this is not on the agenda, but it came in today. As you are aware, we received the purchase and sale agreement for Council Oak. And we do just need to get an additional document that connects the 150,000 coming from TDC to the town, so that, we are working on that to try to finish this up so that we can fit into the deadline. So I just, that's really for the public's information.
And for those of you that aren't aware of that, it was decided last week or week before, but the Conservation Commission has come up with 150,000 out of their account to go with 150,000 that we're getting from the Town Economic Development Corporation. And also, I said this before, but the value of that property is about 4.5 million. I mean, 450,000, 4.5 million, gee. 450,000, so really, G. Lopes is, is contributing 150 to it by, in, in form of donation.
What was it, you went?
Absolutely, it's a great thing to happen, so, anyway. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
What's, what's 5B, what's that?
That's what she was just.
That's the financial statement.
That's the second.
Yes, I didn't wanna call it a policy, because I don't wanna put out some unrealistic expectation. It's not going to be a policy by February 7th, so I called it a statement.
So is it a statement and condition, is that what you're talking about?
That's the, yes, to, we have to send that out with Bond Council, and it gives us a better rating.
Okay, the next agenda item is the Board of Selectmen' regular meeting agenda policy.
So we have tonight, this is a really combination of what was discussed at the last meeting. And this is our, I believe, second reading of this policy. And what this is for.
This would be the first, I think, 'cause we didn't, we haven't adopted it yet.
Oh, that one doesn't count, okay.
Yeah. We just kinda, like, everybody gave their revisions.
Which worked well, I have to say.
I have a couple things, can I just, they're very brief. First thing, it seems to me like this policy kind of morphed into just a general policy for Board of Selectmen meetings. When I wrote it, I would, just had the regular meetings in mind. I think if we're gonna do, have it applied to all meetings, we should just change it to the Board of Selectmen Meeting Agenda Policy, General. Under purpose, where it says, "The purpose of this policy is to establish a procedure that promotes efficiency", I think we should add "and transparency", 'cause that is another point of it. And then, under policy, last revision, where it says, "All items to be discussed at any Board of Selectmen's meeting", I think it would be best, since, since Selectmen Gulart and I have been here, we did have one emergency meeting that happened, that had to happen in a less-than-48-hour manner. I think we should do, after Selectmen's meeting, comma, excluding an emergency meeting or some language to that effect, and then proceed with the following statement, will be submitted to the town. Again, these are just my thoughts, so.
I think you can't, you, you can add an item to the agenda after you've posted it, if it's extraordinary, can't you?
Completely extraordinary, but you, right, but there's like a high standard. But what I believe you were speaking about is a totally meeting that would have to come together.
And you don't have 48 hours to post it.
It's actually similar to what you took care of. So you have ti, there's a contingency, I guess, for that.
I just wanna inoculate us from unforeseen circumstances.
With the way that it's written, without your revision, it prevents us from our ability to act in an emergency case. So I have no problem with that.
We don't wanna, you know, tie our hand behind our back if something were to arise.
And that's vague enough that allows us to hold an emergency meeting? Because eventually, that, that will happen, and it will warrant it instead of an emergency item.
I like that. But everything, and just this, again, my opinion, after that, I think it's perfect, and I had no issues.
In the first sentence, "The Board of Selectmen hereby adopts a policy", strike "in" it's "for", it's not, it's not "in", it's "for", a policy for posting.
I didn't catch that.
It's on the first thing I submitted, which wasn't read, obviously.
It's just a four, replace the "in" with a "for".
"In" with "for".
Any other?
F-O-R, "for".
A policy for posting agendas, yeah, yeah. Grammar.
That was all that I had.
Any other comments?
I had nothing.
Thank you for filling it on one page.
Yes, I saw that.
Nice job.
A little spacing.
So what we'll do, you'll make these revisions, and then we'll bring it back next week, and we'll read it, make it the first reading.
But, Mr. Chairman, given the revisions that Selectmen Gulart and I outlined, will you accept motions to approve it with those revisions tonight?
No, you don't do it that way. You better revise it, and then you read it for the first time, because that's the final edition that, in three weeks, we will vote on.
Right, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I was under the impression we vote and then read it three times after.
No, we'll vote and read it.
Oh, 'cause you have to give the public a chance.
Yeah, exactly, 'cause if, if there are any, if there are any changes or revisions from the public, then you have to go back and do that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, next item is the updated budget process for FY 2019.
So again, this was crafted, I already have a change, from what was discussed last meeting. And I have on here that the Finance Committee begins meeting, so it's about halfway through the page, March slash April. It chart, it shows that the Finance Committee will start meeting to review budget presentations. And from the last meeting, that was supposed to occur after the Board of Selectmen issued its balanced budget to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, so we're just switching that.
So we're just, exactly, so that's what that is. I've also, and I, Ed Schwartz happened to stop in today, so I just chatted with him briefly, and I talked to him about this. He did watch our, our meeting, so he was familiar with it. And so we're gonna talk about this in greater detail at a meeting I sit down next week.
I had, I had just, I guess, questions, comments, concerns, not so much concerns. Where it says, "April slash May", there are other boards who, or Committees who might try to introduce, like, a warrant article or a bylaw. So is it possible, instead of just making it specific to Planning Board with zoning bylaws, to do, and someone can correct me if I'm mistaken, Planning Board or Relevant Board holds hearing on any zoning bylaws or general bylaws that may have been submitted?
So the Planning Board always has to hold a hearing on a zoning bylaw, so that's there as like a safety. But as part of the process, the Board of Selectmen's going to select, or to set an open date for the warrant, accept all the articles in, and then a closing date. And so anybody submitting a bylaw will be, you know, will communicate that to everybody, and anyone submitting a bylaw will have to, at least, at the very least, submit, I have this bylaw, and in my opinion, bylaw should be reviewed by the Board of Selectmen at any appropriate board and town council. So we'll accommodate for that, and it's really all about communication. I can't impress upon that enough. If I have a heads-up that somebody wants something, I can make a little note and have a placeholder, and I, I won't forget it, it'll be on my document. So I think that the process allows built-in, you know, timelines and deadlines for that. But this is specific, I put this on there specifically so that we make sure we actually can act on a zoning bylaw, because the Planning Board must hold the hearing.
My other question is, is there any reason why you put fiscal year 19 budget process? Like, is this gonna be a general procedure for going forward? And if so, would you just change, like, the specific dates?
Well, I didn't wanna come on too strong, I like this process, but if the town didn't, I didn't wanna stick it to them.
I think it's gonna change every year, because the dates are gonna change.
No, but I'm saying, if you just put, like, mid-May instead of May 19, you've given yourself leeway for the going forward.
And this was just to put on paper how I foresaw a budget process going, but I, you know, I don't wanna come in here and say, aren't I get wrong?
But if the Board saw this favorably, and again, I'm not speaking for anybody, not.
This would be, and instead of me saying, like, December 20, other 27.
That's what I was getting, not just.
December meeting.
End of December, or whatever, just keep it very vague.
So maybe we oughta run through this this year, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Before we make it a solid policy.
And the other unfortunate.
Fix the kinks before we vote on something.
And the other unfortunate, I wanted to have the opportunity to meet with the Town Account, and just unfortunately, I wasn't able to, but I, I want her included in the conversation, so.
That'll be a good idea.
Yep.
So there we go.
Make a note now, Stormwater bylaw change with a big question mark. There may not, there may not be a need to change it, but that will come from the Board of Health, not Planning or Zoning. And we are working on getting the MS4 done. So just as a reminder.
Yep, that's exactly why I like it, so I run down. I already have a sheet of paper, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, now we're gonna point Mallory to another duty.
Yes.
So I have here a.
So I had spoken to, okay, let me back up, brief history lesson. So former Selectmen Menjies was very instrumental in having the Disaster Committee be active. I think that's something that this Board, and quite frankly, the town, needs to get back to, because God forbid anything happened, we need to have things in place. I think we should have trainings, and I know it's gonna take a while to get everything up and running. We have not met since I was appointed, I don't know if elected. I'm not sure if Selectmen Gulart had a meeting of this before I came on the Board. But I definitely think this is something that we need to get back to. And I think now that we have a Town Administrator, I think that it's gonna be more possible to coordinate trainings and things like that, and just to keep everything organized going forward.
It's a matter of when we can do it, you know, but I think it's absolutely right. Yeah, we wanna be prepared, not wait till the disaster happens, so.
And this can also be, like, who assembles? Say we have a, a major blizzard, and you know, streets are, like, who assembles? And, you know, I'm assuming it's a fire.
Everything, everything is in place. What Brett is saying basically is, it's time to get the committee together, so everybody knows who's doing what. Because the people who have the assigned duties know what they're supposed to do. We've had a change in personnel, and not everyone knows who's on first.
Correct.
So.
So that might be something we can do in the short term, just to have a general meeting to talk about.
Like an organizational.
An organization, just so everybody understands who's responsible for what. So we'll leave that to you to set up.
Like we do most things.
It's not our highest priority, I think.
Karen has a list already of, of people and phone numbers and.
Oh, yes, I have it.
Even the one that goes out, there is also one that meets periodically, that I, I attended some of the meetings when I was on the Board of Health. They held in Middleborough, and they're regional meetings, so that if there is a.
Region 5, I remember that.
Exactly, exactly. If there is a, a big problem in, in a particular town, Region 5 can respond. And even with stockpiles of supplies and materials in secure areas, that, let me say, the inner circle knows where the stuff is if they need it. But it's all controlled and maintained, and they got a whole system to distribute, depending on what the problem is.
We had a short little meeting, when was that event? Was a hurricane coming our way or something? But anyways, we had a short little meeting. And Chief, Chief McGee and Tom Ferry and, and the Police Chief, they really much, pretty much have it all. They know what's going on. I think it would just be beneficial for all of us to get on.
Region 5 goes down to the Cape, too. So it's, it's a good area, and those meetings are held at the Middleborough Town Hall, but they're, they're really interesting.
The other reason why I brought this up wasn't just to, obviously, to get Town Administrator Aaronstein appointed, but also, in doing a little bit of digging, and I'm not sure, we may already have gotten funds for this, but if you have an active Disaster Committee that does, like, trainings and things like that, the state actually will give you money to do that. So it's just opened some more doors for the town.
And we have a list of everybody that's on here.
We do, it's on the website as well.
So when do we appoint her?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Mallory Aaronstein to the Disaster Committee.
Check it.
Okay, one favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
One other question before we move off this item, even though we already voted. I looked, I looked it up, and I'm not quite sure, I'm glad you're here tonight, Mr. Commissioner. I'm not quite sure why, like, who chose the name Disaster Committee? Is there any way we could make this, like, the Emergency Preparedness Committee?
That could be done at, at one of our organization.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't like to think of Desert Disaster.
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're prepared.
Emergency Preparedness.
As a member, a qualified member of the committee, I will tell you that the behind-the-scenes mechanisms are all still in place. We just haven't had the committee be more organized since Selectmen Menjies has left the, what's like the. The, all of the parameters are still set, all the public safety officials know what they have to do. But it is a good point, because if there is a declaration, and there is funding that we can get from FEMA, BEMA, and the above, an organized committee goes the wrong way.
I agree.
Thank you.
One of the things that we covered at Region 5, one of the health workshops, was, for example, emergency drop areas if you have to do mass immunizations. And we looked at areas where there are people congregating, where you would actually deliver supplies, and, and certain groups from the public would go to that location. So you don't have everybody going to the same place. Mannheim, New England was one of the places we talked about, because of the, the lines they have. So those are some of the things that came up at Region 5.
And they're quarterly meetings, you said?
I'm not sure if it's quarterly.
I don't think there was often a quarterly, maybe semi-annual.
Oh, well, that makes, makes more sense, okay. I'd love to attend.
Okay, let's move on. The next item is report prepared by Selectmen Zouroffas after meeting with the Fire Chief.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with the Board, I think it would be best to table this this evening, simply because I would prefer myself to have Chief McGee present for this, 'cause I don't wanna speak for him or the Department.
The other thing I think would be good, too, I, I think this is good, appreciate you doing it. I think we should get a more thorough report from the Chief of where he's going in the next. 'Cause I know he's talked about command structure and that kinda stuff, so, so I would.
Which I actually wasn't aware of until he spoke to Town Administrator Aaronstein. So I'd be totally fine with adding that to this.
So I think that's, that our Town Administrator should meet with the Chief and kinda come up with a plan, and then invite him, once he gets that done, then we can meet with him.
Just so you know, I, I sent Town Administrator Aaronstein the report, so she'd like to add to it, then we totally.
And I will just add that he has made a promotion, so it would be timely to have him before you, and also his promotion, just so we can publicize that. So we're gonna plan that for January. And then there is an item that I, you know, we can talk about it next meeting, but hopefully it can be rectified without having to come to you. So hopefully that can, would, be sorted out fairly quickly.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I make a motion to table the report.
Okay.
Fire Chief, right?
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, one favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the social media policy. So I looked at this, I think it's pretty good, I, I know you, I have concerns about this. I think, I think the rest of it's great. Number five, contact unbecoming.
I have that circled.
'Cause I don't know that we can, we can do that. I mean, you know, they're private citizens, they, they have a right to free speech. Anything they wanna say, they can say it. I mean, you take it for what it's worth, I don't think we can discipline someone because on their private time, they, they have an opinion about something. I think it's a very dangerous place to go, but, so I would.
I agree, that's my danger zone, I guess, on this policy. Regardless, I'd like this to be examined by Town Council, just because of the nature of it. It's an evolving item.
Before we institute this, do we have, and I haven't seen it, a policy on use of town equipment, computers and internet and that whole thing?
We definitely.
Computer use policy is the first thing you need.
So I am glad you brought this up, 'cause we talked about this today. We've kinda been rolling with lots of policies, and we've decided, it was us, Selectmen Taylor and I decided to put together, I'm going to put together a list of policies, and then bring it to you, and we'll prioritize them and work on them, because you're absolutely right. We're kind of horse before the cart and off that, so I agree with you. I don't believe one of those exists. However, there was a massive manual adopted by previous membership, and I haven't had the chance to digest all of it, and I'm not sure it's all relevant to DITIN. and I'm not sure it's all relevant to Dayton, um, so I would like to look at that as well to see if something's in there. But I totally agree with you, and there's an email, um, that has come up, come to my attention. Some people don't have town emails or just... So that should be addressed for sure with the public records law. Um, so, you're absolutely right. I think this one is kind of over here, and we have other ones that lead up to it.
We gotta start with the equipment. Computer usage policy is, is basically, everyone has to understand that when they put something on that computer or access sites, that belongs to the town of Dayton.
It's public, yeah.
Right.
And, uh, you know, as we've seen with some of the stuff that they have found on public computers, uh, you break the law, it's there. You know, but whatever.
So, I, I agree. So this'll be on there, and this, it's not like I spent a, a super amount of time on this. I had this. Um, I've just added to it to fit Dayton's, um, needs. It was originally, way back when, based upon a police social media policy in which conduct unbecoming is a little bit more aggressive there. Um, so that is one that, that I was writing it and reviewing it, and that came out. But, um, this was something I could easily put together and was asked of me, so it came out. But you're absolutely correct.
I know that the UMass Amherst campus, I sat on a committee to revise the computer usage policy and the social media policy many years ago, but those are all available on-site, and they are state, obviously, state-approved policies, and probably could very easily be adapted to the town of Dayton, but, uh, they were very detailed.
So we probably should table this, this particular policy and what you do.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we table, uh, action on the adoption of the social media policy.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. The other thing I want, just wanted to say, though, I think, I think Mallory and I had talked a little bit about it today or whatever, yesterday. Um, I think we have to be careful. We don't, my concern is if we all send her things we wanted to work on, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna inundate her and overwhelm her, and not, and then it's not clear whether the right priorities are being set. So, I think that what she was gonna do is, uh, look at the poli, like, pick the top five that needs to be worked on right now. 'Cause some, some of them are more important than others. I think the one you just brought up is a very important one.
Well, it's, it, that one came up 'cause of the priority and the order in which you do them.
Right, yeah.
You can't have a social media policy if you don't have the computer usage policy.
So, we'll let it come back, and then if we wanna, um, yeah, it's okay.
Right, and then of course...
Well, what do we think is the most important?
Let's have her bring back to us next, next week.
Okay.
Yeah, let her do her homeworking. Okay? Thanks. Okay. Got that one. Technical assistance agreement with Serpent for the open space and recreation plan.
Thank you.
This is the, uh, we talk, oh, this is the 25,000. Why don't you explain to us what this is?
Sure. I'm still waiting on a call back from the, uh, Executive Director of Serpent, um, Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District, just in case anybody doesn't know. So, we are partnering, Town, Town of Dayton is partnering with them for our open space plan, which is part of the community compact, and the state is giving Dayton $10,000 in order to basically contract with Serpent to develop this plan. So, that's a little bit later on the agenda, um, so we'll touch that in a minute. But this, this agreement with Serpent that we have to sign says, um, that the fee shall not exceed 25,000, but of course, we're only getting 10,000, not only, but we're getting 10,000 from the state, so it doesn't match up. I've called and left a message, and I've emailed, and I have not heard back yet. Um, I do support this. It does say not to exceed, and we can ideally monitor it, but I don't, I wanna get this going, and I'm sure all of you do, but I don't know if I'd sign it just yet, and I, um, that's where I'm standing. I, I called them on Monday, or I emailed them on Monday. I thought I would get a response.
I think the only money we have is the $10,000 grant money, 'cause we haven't appropriated any money.
Exactly, exactly.
So we do not exceed 10,000?
I sent it to them.
But see, this is...
We can't overcommit ourselves, 'cause we don't have the funds.
'Cause this said, payment total cost of service to be performed by Serpent shall not exceed 25,000. So, I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean we're gonna pay them 25,000?
But that's my point. All we have is the 10, so right now that number should be 10.
Exactly. But there was some discussion about the, the, I call them the free hours that the town does have. But where this was specific to a community compact, I don't wanna use up the, the free hours on something that we're supposed to be getting from the pot over here from the state.
I was under the impression that the free hours were for the agricultural commission.
Me, too, yes, yes.
In, in open space, too.
No.
No, the free hours.
They get money for that.
Right, that's, we're coming to that in a few minutes.
Because we have this community compact, I feel that it's supposed to trickle down specifically through, and, um, so I'm just waiting on his response.
Is it possible that that was a typo?
No.
And I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Well, they'll let us know.
Why don't we, okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, that we table, um, the technical assistance agreement with Serpent for the open space and recreation plan.
Check it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I do have one quick question. This is for you, Chairman Taylor. Um, do, do you, or even you, Town Administrator Aaronstein, do you know if this open space and recreation plan's supposed to be part of the master plan, or is it proposed to be separate, like its own separate document?
I've seen it in both towns, that, I mean, I've seen it both ways in towns, um, but at the very least, the master plan should mention that there's an open space plan.
But the problem is, okay, we'll, we'll discuss this later, but the master plan was created first, so I would have the feeling like it was gonna be part of, like, added to, in addition to the master plan.
That's a, the planning board has to vote to include that, so.
Might be a good place to bring up a, a thing I wanted to bring up. Um, you know, the, the, that survey that the open space committee did has come back, and you're not gonna get into the details of it, but it's very, very informative, and, uh, we appreciate everybody that responded to that. Um, but one of the things is, you know, people want open space, and what I, one, one thing that had been done in, in Western Mass, I'd gone to a conference several years ago, they invited all the larger landowners to come in, and just talk to them and see what, you know, what ideas they have on how we can preserve open space. And my first thought was it should be done by the open space committee, but then I thought, maybe it should be done by this committee, uh, by, by this board, and invite open space, you know, planning, zoning.
Conservation.
Conservation, yeah, any, any interested parties, and then get, you know, open it up, we'd, we'd identify, uh, what we consider a large piece of property, and then send letters out to all those landowners and see if they'd like to come in and just, you know, talk to us. Because, you know, we can get ahead of this, and if there are things that we can do as a, as a town, uh, through CPC or open space or whatever, uh, to try and preserve more, more open space, I think it'd be a, a good way to go, so. So, anybody have thought about that?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, anytime, anytime you have, like, a joint meeting, you know, to get everybody on page, it's a good idea. The commissioner.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was, um, as you know, with Conservation Commission earlier today, and we spoke, uh, truth and fact, so to speak, afterwards, and this exact thing came up, where they wanted an outlet, a platform to block the public, because most of the meetings are not televised. So I specifically told them to reach out to you, see if you can get, uh, a slight bit of, uh, and do that type of, uh, public relations announcement. So it might be a good idea to get all the parties involved.
Yeah, okay.
And it was a, you remember when we, before we had those subdivisions accepted at town meeting, we had, used to have those quarterly joint meetings?
Yes.
Those were very watched. Like, I think that's a really good thing. I think people really liked that.
I don't think we did on this quarter, but...
We didn't, well, we finished, we finished everything, mostly, correct?
Never finished.
I think we should at least have two meetings a year. If we don't do it four, we should at least have those meetings twice a year.
I like that.
And I, I would, I would encourage that, because you're right. There were a lot of people stopping in the streets and said, "That was a great meeting," so.
'Cause it shows, and you know this, it shows that we can get everyone together and on the same page and move forward, so.
I think the perfect example is this Council Oakland.
Right.
Everybody came together, put their heads together, figured out a solution, so.
And, um, sometime, you know, mid-spring, we should have the upstairs done next door, so that's a perfect meeting place for all those activities.
So I think what we'll do then, I'll work with Mallory to get, uh, a letter, first at the committees, to get them on board, and then we'll figure out when we might wanna have this, and when, how we wanna communicate it and stuff, so, okay.
I'm gonna be good, too, because I don't think people, uh, townspeople in general, I don't think know what the town owns, number one. And sometimes, like with the acquisition of Broad Cove, well, some of us, I'll say on the inside, know that Conservation bought just about the rest of Broad Cove, all the way down to Somerset Line. Um, and, and they've also got the plans to have the, the viewing station, I'll call it. Um, but I think it's very important that people understand what we have as assets in open space, protected land, whatever, and then see what we can do to add to it.
Exactly. Or come, or, yeah, give it, so we, we own a piece here, we own a piece here, there's a piece in the middle that we could acquire there, we'd have a nice tract of land, so.
And we've already got the, um, Land Use Committee list of land.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
So that's, that's, uh, we've already got that inventory. That's good.
I ask a question, uh, Mr. Chairman. One thing I found interesting, too, was I didn't realize that we had a for, our own forest, Town Forest.
Oh, yes, Town Forest.
Which is interesting. Now, these meetings with the open...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, open meetings, yeah.
'Cause I, I definitely for open space, so, all the green, all that good stuff, but also, I got, we gotta find a place, maybe we could for a little, you know, like, a coffee shop or something in somewhere.
It's a whole other topic.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to put it up.
Uh, Mr. Crawford, Jack Crawford, who's on the Conservation Commission, who was here tonight, he's the forest master for the town.
Oh, okay.
Not to be confused with Mr. Ferry, the tree ward, no, different position.
Yeah, he's up for the tree ward, then.
Yeah, yeah, but, but Jack Crawford is the forest master.
Be a tight race.
No.
We'll get Stacy to run against him.
No one ever runs against him, I don't think.
I'd do it if I could.
He's busy now, I think.
He's not that busy.
No, I'm not, you know, Mallory's here.
Oh, yeah.
Wonderful.
She's busy.
Okay, so, uh, next order of business is the recommendation of building commissioner for awarded bids received. And this is for scanning services, am I correct?
Uh, it's for two things. Hello, everyone. I wanna wish everybody a happy holiday season. Hope you have a good time with your family and your friends. Remember what's important. So I have two more, um, bids in front of you for tonight, moving forward with the logistics for next door. Uh, these two in particular reference the permit archiving and document organizing special article that I've been, uh, implementing over the last couple of years. I held off on these two portions because of the, uh, physical relocation of my office. Obviously, once that came to fruition last year, um, I wouldn't have a place to put all these cabinets instead of trying to find holes to fill here and then. So, um, through going to, uh, combine sessions, um, OSD sessions, et cetera, et cetera, I was able to make some contacts. So, I'm not sure which one you have in front of you first, but we'll go to the scanning services. Okay, um, what I wanna do is, there are banker boxes that were stuffed in all corners of this building, filled with all of my historic building permits. Um, it equates to about 10,000 documents. So the plan is, now that I have software implementation where all of our new permits for the past year or so are archived electronically, the historic data, I wanna do the same. So what I wanna do is have all of that stuff scanned, put on a hard drive, tagged, so it's searchable through a query, uh, engine, and refiled by address. Unfortunately, this and other building departments around the Commonwealth thought that doing it by year and number was the way to do it, but, uh, it doesn't take anyone to figure out that it's impossible to find anything, so.
Unless you know the year.
Right. So, so this company, uh, the companies that I solicited are going to physically remove the documents from town through a chain of custody. They're going to be physically restapled, scanned, restapled, then they're going to be refiled by street address, and then returned to the new location next door sometime mid to end of January. So...
Are you required to keep the hard copy?
I'm sorry?
I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, no, I, no, I'm required. The Attorney General requires me to keep the hard copies.
But with their, so my, my concern for you, of course, is space. Um, will there be a way we could reconfigure those?
Well, see, see, any of the new stuff coming in, and once I implement online permitting, which will be sometime in February, that's gonna reduce a lot of the paper. There is a way to destroy the paper copies. I don't wanna do that just yet, okay? Um, what I am going to do, though, is consolidate building and health files and make a permit jacket, which is, someone wants to see a specific address on Main Street, they pull this jacket out, everything for that property is in that jacket.
So are you consolidating, because right now they're in different parts of the building. They're close, but they're, you know, you have your Board of Health here, and you're building in a closet somewhere. So my question for you is, is it gonna free up space once you consolidate those files?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So the plan is to get my documents archived, get the file cabinets ordered, get the file cabinets installed. When my stuff comes back, we are going to, uh, physically put it in the file cabinets. Ooh, just after the new year, Mallory and I are gonna sit down and talk over some logistics. I wanna work with the Health Department to do the same thing with their stuff, which is a lot less documents than I have. So if we're able to do that, and we're able to destroy what we don't need, but keep what we do need, then I'm gonna consolidate the files, and that will eliminate some of the file cabinet requirements that we currently have.
I guess my question is, you keep the hard copy, what's the point in, in the...
Because it's searchable.
Correct.
It's searchable.
It's an email instead of having...
Yeah, it's searchable on our software. So, there's a public portal in my, in my database, which is available to the public, and I'm gonna roll it out sort of all in fair fashion, where the public will now be able to search all of these documents online.
That's amazing.
And that, we've already reduced the traffic in my office from appraisals, from real estate personnels, et cetera, et cetera.
Because you can email it to them, if it's not sensitive.
Well, if the public portal is accessible by them right from their desktop or laptop, they don't even need to come into my office. Right. So the only thing they need to come into my office for right now is historic data, which I want to eliminate by doing this. And it's not a lot of money, when you look at it.
No, I think, I just...
So why don't we take your recommendation and make it...
Before we do that, I just wanna say how proud I am of you and the department for doing this. You've been talking about it, we've discussed it. I think it's gonna be awesome for two reasons. Not just because it's gonna help your department and also help the Board of Health, but also because, and I suspect it will work, 'cause you're always efficient, um, but I suspect that it might be good for other departments, like, for example, the Clerk's Office. And I think if it works, you've now set the standard by showing the process for how another department might be able to do that as well.
If I can just comment quickly, um, and, and I tend, this is why I wanted to have quite a bit of time when I meet with you in a couple of weeks. When I set out to do this, I was going to be the first. I made sure that the permit company and the software company I went with, which is cloud-based, so we didn't need to buy any hardware, was adaptable to other departments, and I even asked for some customization capabilities, which I did. Uh, and, and the, the permitting company was very receptive to doing that. Ironically, it's in their off-the-shelf product now, 'cause they love my ideas, but in any way, uh, should've got a contract first. So my intent was always to be the nucleus and have other departments piggyback on it, um, as we move things forward. I'm a little behind the eight ball. I wanted to do this a, a few years earlier, but it happened this way, and I'm running with it.
But it's true, you're the, you're the first, you know, so nobody's expecting you to be done this long.
And actually, when you look, when you look at the way it's worked out, I would prefer to work with the town administrator in doing this, because really, she should be, she should be the point person for all departments, so I think it's all gonna work fine.
Let's get a motion on his recommendation.
What's your recommendation, Jim?
I recommend that we give, uh, the scanning services, uh, contract to Boston OCR LSC for 29.50. Now, I have one point that I need to make. All of the companies, if the document scanning goes over 10,000, is per document. But we all think that 10,000 is the number, so this should be the threshold.
And the other two bids you had was, uh, 35, 25 from, uh, Juan and 4,999.
4,999, right.
So that seemed like a pretty good one.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good work, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you. And the other one is for the physical file cabinets. Right, I'm sorry?
Then he wants a file cabinet.
This is controversial, Mr. Commissioner.
Well, it, it was an interesting bidding, uh, process. Um, I think if you look, you have one that's dated December 20th, one December 12th. Do you have that? Uh, one I've voided out?
You have the 20th, yeah.
Yep, I have the 12th.
All right, so my original, um, responses were on the December 12th letter that I was willing, uh, wanted to give you. And the, the prices for 14, three drawer lateral file cabinets, brand new, uh, from Cam Office Supply was 81.20, 7, uh, 7,026 from WB Mason, and 73.16, 64 from Staples. Um, about the time I was ready to bring this up to Karen, Staples Advantage called Nancy in my office and asked how the bidding went. And when Nancy informed them that WB Mason was the low bidder, they said, "We'll match their price and we'll drop the installation costs," uh, which brought the price down to 64.96. So I came up and met with Mallory and said, "WB Mason was the low bidder originally. We at least need to let the other two companies have the opportunity to meet that same number." So that's what happened. So WB Mason matched the number, which is 64.96, um, and we're gonna award it to WB Mason, 'cause they were the original low bidder.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we award the bid for the, is it cabinets?
Yeah, the file cabinets.
File cabinets to WB Mason at a bid price of $6,496.
Second.
Okay, are you comfortable with that process?
Yes.
Imagine like that?
Yep, um, if, that, you just have to give them the opportunity, and they did, they came down. I mean, they could've said no, and then it would've been Staples. You have to give them the opportunity.
I did find out one thing. If you wanna buy cabinets, this is the time of year. Because the prices go, the prices go up as of January 1st, and, I mean, I'm good at car buying. I mean, I felt like I could've, I kept, I could, I could have needle in these people for a few more dollars, so, uh, everybody wanted the business. So, so the taxpayer saved out. We saved almost $600 in the, in the, uh, the final.
Is this, I have one question, 'cause we are in desperate need of a file cabinet in our office. Is this freeing up any files? Or these are just in addition?
No, these are in addition, too, yeah. I'm sorry.
No, it's a-
Okay, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
What were you gonna say, Mr. Commissioner?
If, if you do, I would reach out. Karen has a contact at WB Mason and Staples. If you make a decision before the end of the year, you'll probably get a good price.
No, thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to the, um, the open space grant contract. And that's the $10,000.
I alluded to this earlier. This is the, it's essentially, it's a contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to receive the, the funding, the $10,000. So, we should sign this and send it on its way.
This is the 10,000 that's going to Serpide?
Correct.
This is the 10, this is the 10,000 they're awarding to us?
The state gives us to give to Serpide, essentially.
Yeah, the money's going to Serpide.
Correct.
Just like the money we got for, the other 10 we got for the initial presentation for CCC.
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize Chairman Taylor to sign the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Open Space Grant Contract as prepared.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We talked about fine print?
I know. I couldn't even, I had to zoom in.
They got it to one page, though. One page.
Crazy. Okay, motion carries.
Does he need to, uh, Town Administrator, he needs to sign it tonight, like at the minute?
I think we should.
I think you should, Mr. Chairman.
But yes, I would sign this and, because it says 45 days.
Correct.
I don't wanna wait. I'm sure it'll be faster than that, but with the holidays, who knows?
Slowed up in the mail, who knows what's gonna happen?
Okay, why don't you move on to the next one. I'm doing this. Payment authorization designation for the town administrator.
Are we sure we wanna do this?
So, apparently, we only designated, you designated my position to sign off on Board of Selectmen bills and this would be for my own budget.
Okay.
I think that sums up.
Who's spending your own funds, okay?
I haven't started spending my own funds.
So, are we voting to approve the payment authorization designation form? Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the payment authorization designation form for the town administrator account.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll all have to sign that. Let your word sign on some of these.
That's that. Do we need to sign this?
I believe you have to sign that and then we provide that to the town accountant or she can use me as an authorized signatory.
If it gets held up, we know whose fault it is, because I didn't even have to sign it.
We have an announcement from Senator Mark Pacico and I'm gonna read it. It's Happy Holidays from Senator Mark Pacico. Please join me at my upcoming Senior Health and Wellness Fair. Representatives for federal, state, and local senior agencies will be in attendance to provide information and presentations on senior health programs, benefits, and wellness activities. Blood pressure checks, glucose screenings, and flu shots will be offered. Complimentary coffee and pastries, and this will be Tuesday, January 16th, from 10:00 to 4:00. 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Roseland Ballroom on 174 Broadway, which is 138 in Taunton. And again at, on January 19th, from 10:00 to 4:00, at the Middleborough Town Hall, the grand ballroom. Wow, big a ballroom. So, to confirm attendance, please call the district office, his district office, at 508-822-3000. And what we'll do is, we'll get this up on the website and we'll also have it here in Town Hall if anybody wants to give the number. Okay?
Thank you. I had one of these a number of years ago at Roseland and it was when the Obamacare was being proposed and that ballroom was packed.
Yeah.
It was packed.
Okay. The next order of business is to, is a correspondence we have from the family of Frank Torres. And I, I just wanna, I wanna read it. We got a card, they sent us a card as well. And it says, "Dear friends and staff at Town Hall, our family wishes to express our thanks for your kind gestures of sympathy and respect for Frank Tor, Francis Torres. It was an honor to see the Town Hall flag flown at half-staff and friends gathered outside in the, in the rain to salute his funeral procession. We're deeply touched as we would have..." "We were deeply touched as we would have been."
As he would have been.
Oh, as he would have been.
Let's let Nancy read the next one.
Thank you. Please accept this tall token of our gratitude with best wishes. Well, that, that token is, is $3,500. And this is for the Town of Dayton Open Space Land Acquisition Fund in memory of Frank Torres. So, we are very appreciative to the family of Frank Torres, who was a very prominent person in our community and contributed so much. So, we thank you very much for this donation and we put to good use.
Can we, can we just read this? I love this paragraph about Frank.
"Frank was born into Dayton's farm community. He was a lifelong resident, local business owner, and former selectman of the Town of Dayton. We hope to honor his many years of active involvement in the community and sport efforts to preserve the character of the town he so loved throughout his life." So.
He served 15 years as a selectman.
And we will certainly honor that to the family of Mr. Torres. Thank you.
This is very, very important. Thanks, thank you so much. Okay. We have any selecting details? No?
The only thing I wanna mention is, I got my copy and this is, if you haven't gotten one of these folks, this is a great Christmas, last-minute Christmas gift. This is the anniversary calendar that the Historical Commission has printed. It's got a lot of old pictures in it of the town. You can get these at some of the businesses around town. Arujos, you can get it from any Historical Commission member, but anyhow, I believe they are $22. There's also a children's coloring book that you might find interesting. It's an A to Z book about the Town of Dayton and that's also available from some of the local businesses and any members of the Historical Commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, acknowledgements, no acknowledgements?
No, I don't.
Okay, and approval of minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 1st, 2017, the minutes of the regular meeting of November 8th, 2017, and the minutes of the special meeting of November 29th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 25A-18 in the amount of $87,317 payroll. Warrant 25B-18 in the amount of $317,106.42. And warrant 25C-18 in the amount of $1,596.67, the last two being payable, be approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 We skipped over a couple of announcements. Let me go back to that. You've heard these before, but trash bags, sharps, disposal containers, recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call 508-669-6431 for information. And then there are vacancies still on the Historical Commission, the Land Use Committee, and the Capital Outlay Committee. So, if you're interested in getting involved in, in your town government, those are three pretty good committees to get, to get on.
I just wanted to do one acknowledgement. I wasn't able to attend the holiday party today, so I apologize to all the town employees, but I do just wanna let you all know I appreciate how hard you all work, how dedicated you are to your job, Mr. Commissioner. You're in attendance, so you're the ambassador tonight. You're very welcome. And I look forward to working with everybody hand in hand in 2018 to continuing to push the town forward into the modern century, so I look forward to that. I know. I didn't really mean hand in hand.
I know. I echo that same thought. Everybody works hard up here and we really appreciate everybody's effort. Okay.
And happy holidays and merry Christmas, everyone.
I think one more meeting, but.
Yeah, we have a, yeah.
They do. Somewhere.
She's gonna write something that I have to, I'm supposed to-
Oh, no, it's right here. I'm sorry.
Okay. "As a chairman, I entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief. In Exception, Exception 3, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining as the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the position of the public body, the Board of Selectmen, specifically a strategy session regarding clerical, library, council on aging union, and the police officers' union. As an open session, will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. We will not reconvene in open session, so."
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are gonna go into executive session, so.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, Cable. You can-